Chapter 231 of the laws of 1976 known as the Open Public Meetings Act. Mr. Kim will notify the public that the notice of the date, time, and location of the agenda for this meeting to the extent known was provided at least 48 hours prior to commencement of this meeting in the following manner. One, by posting such notice on the Public Council Board of the Lakewood Board of Education Offices and the Lakewood Township Municipal Building. Number two, by emailing such notice to the Office of the Asbury Park Press. Number three, by calling such notice with the Board Secretary. And number four, by mailing such notice to all individuals who request it and pay for a copy of the same. All call. Mr. Slacken.
Mr. Jackson Byers.
Here.
Mr. Newhouse.
Here.
Mr. Raisit.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Tendler.
Here.
Mr. Tricer.
Here.
Mrs. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Bender.
Here.
Through the chair. We do have these evening day presentation. But the board was going to go to processions and discuss a group meeting, but we do have members of the public here and we do have some presenters who are looking to present after our work today. So we would make the presentation. We would use that first. And then if there's anything to go to session four, but our staff perhaps we have a workable day, so we'd like if that's okay, the presenters or the presentation, that we have the presentation first.
Yes, thank you.
I just have to run in my glasses.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Jim. Okay, as you know, the Lakewood School District had undergone a quality single accountability continuum review in 2016-17. And based on the review, the district had been placed on a continuum in five areas. Instruction and program, fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. In instruction and program, the district scored 62 percent. However, the county gave us 54 percent. In fiscal management, the district scored 66 percent, and the county gave us 56 percent. In governance, the district scored 66 percent, the county gave us 66 percent. In operations, the district scored themselves a 95 percent, and the county scored a 95 percent. In personnel, the district scored 100 percent, and the county scored us a 100 percent as well. In the area that the district did not receive at least 180 percent of the weighted indicators, the district is required to complete the district approval plan to adjust all non-compliant indicators. In instruction and program, there are 21 questions on the DPR under instruction and program. However, due to time, I will only review the indicators that the district did not receive any points for. So questions 1 through 6 refer to the state assessment which is PARC. And the first question, the district meets the annual measurable objective, AMO. In language arts literacy for the district's total population, the district did not receive any points as we did not reach AMO. Question number two, the district meets the annual measurable objective, AMO. In language arts literacy for the district's total population, we did not meet that, so the district did not receive any points. In language arts literacy, state assessment data for the district's total student population shows one of the following. The first, you got to pick A, B, or C. And the first one is at least 90 percent of the total student population achieved proficiency in the most recent years assessed, which is a New Jersey Department goal. Then A or B was 85 percent, 80 percent. We did not reach any of those, so we did not receive any points. Number four was the same, except we replaced it with mathematics. We did not receive any points. Number five was the district has no priority schools as designated by the New Jersey Department of Education. Lakewood High School is a priority school, so we did not receive any points for that. Five B, the district has reward schools as designated by the New Jersey Department. We do not have any reward schools, so we automatically received zero points. Number six, at least 70 percent of the district's total student population across all grades tested in science achieved proficiency or advanced status on the most recent state assessments. We received zero points for that as we did not reach that goal. Number seven, percentage of students who graduated high school by way of the High School Proficiency Assessment, also known as the HESA, at least in the last academic year. Letter A, at least 95 percent according to the most recent New Jersey Department published high school graduation rate. Letter B was 90 percent, C, 85 percent, or 80 percent. Unfortunately, we did not meet any of those goals. And the county responded, the district's 2016 four-year cohort graduation rate was 75.3. So since we did not get at least 80 percent, we did not receive any points. So for numbers nine and 10, the district met all of those goals. The county told us we met all of those goals. However, they felt because without a bilingual child study team, we did not, they felt that we cannot meet the individual's strengths and weaknesses, and that would remain a challenge. So therefore, they did not give us the points for that. So then we move on to fiscal management. Number one, the monthly Board Secretary's report is completed and reconciled without exceptions, and is completed within 30 days of the month's end. Reconciled with Treasury's report, equivalent report within 45 days of the month's end and submitted to the Board within 60 days of the month's end for approval. We received zero points with this. However, the Board Secretary report is approved 95 percent of times on the board agenda. For number two, the district follows a standard operating procedures manual for business functions, which includes a system of internal controls to prevent over expenditures of line item accounts and to safeguard assets from theft and fraud. The district does have a standard operating procedures manual, however, line items are sometimes over expended, and a budget appropriation adjustment is made to correct over expenditures. Number four, the district has filed the annual audit of its comprehensive annual financial report and filed other supporting forms and collections. We received zero points. The fiscal audits from the past years have been submitted on time. Five B, the district receives an unqualified opinion on the annual audit and has no repeat findings of a substantial nature. The district responded that yes, and the county stated no, and their response was, "The district continues to be in a deficit. The repeat audit findings show that the district is still in a deficit for both the general and special revenue funds." In addition, the district did not keep a sufficient documentation to support students reported on HESA. This resulted in a repeated audit finding. Corrective action was taken on all other prior year findings. Five C, the district receives an unqualified opinion on the annual audit and has no material weaknesses in the findings, and the district feels this is true and should receive the points. So the district will question McCarthy on that. Five D, the district receives an unqualified opinion on the annual audit and ends the year with no deficit balances and no line item over expenditures in the general fund, special revenue fund, capital project funds, or debt service funds. The district is requesting more information in regards to this finding. The district manages and oversees no child up behind IDA, AR, and other entitlement and discretionary grants as required. Specifically, the district complies with demonstration of comparability maintenance of effort, supplement on the plan, and other federal grant fiscal requirements. For this, we received zero points. Spends grant funds as budgeted amendments and budget modifications are completed for charges that exceed the applicable threshold. The district stated that we, yes, the county stated no, the reports are not submitted to statement of time and fashion. This we also have questioned. The district manages and oversees no child up behind IDA, AR, and other entitlement and discretionary grants as required. Specifically, the district approves salaries funded by federal grants as documented in the Board Minutes and maintains the required time activity reports. Corrective action has been taken on this finding. The district provides proper oversight and accounting of capital projects and reverendum and other under thirty capital projects. Specifically, the district conducts the proper fiscal closeout of completed projects. This includes proper transfer of interest earned annually to the debt service and the general funds. For this, we received zero points. And as far as governance, the Board of Education has a policy and contract with the Chief School Administrator to annually evaluate the Chief School Administrator based on the adoption of the Goals and Performance Measures, which reflect that highest priorities given to student achievement and attention to subgroup achievement. For this, we received zero points. The Board's adopted budget includes sufficient resources to address all Board-approved corrective action measures as applicable in response to annual audits and other programmatic and fiscal monitoring reports. So where is the district now? The New Jersey Department has developed accountability profiles for each district, and according to the New Jersey Department of Ed, as the accountability profile, Lakewood meets or exceeds almost all targets. According to the accountability profile from the New Jersey Department of Ed, Lakewood has 3,351 students enrolled in a tested grade as reported by the district in 2016. Less than 1 percent of Lakewood students are enrolled in a tested grade and did not participate in the assessment. And 138 Lakewood students enrolled in the district after July 1st. At least 95 percent of Lakewood students who enrolled in tested grades participated in the statewide assessment. 23.9 percent of the student group in the student group was expected to score at either level four or level five on the rigorous PARC assessment, or level three or four on the Dynamic Learning Maps to ensure the school meets the long-term academic achievement goal of 80 percent. 24.9 of the student group enrolled in a tested grade prior to July 1st, 2016, scored at least either level four or level five on the PARC, or level three or four on the Dynamic Learning Maps. The Lakewood School District met their target, which is set by the New Jersey Department of Education. Lakewood High School's four-year graduation rate was set by the Department of Education at 74.6. Lakewood's high school graduation rate this past year was 75.3, which means Lakewood met its target. Prior absenteeism, state average is 10.3, Lakewood is 13.1. At this point, Lakewood did not meet its target. The Lakewood School District on audit improvements, in 2013-14, there were 31 audit findings. In 2014-15, there were 17 audit findings. In 2015-16, there were nine audit findings, and in 2016-17, there were six audit findings. As far as governance goes, there's a new board, there's a new general counsel, and meetings have not been canceled due to a lack of form in a very long time. Due to the significant growth that the district has made in various areas, the district is applying for equivalency, which will allow the district to utilize the new CUSAC growth model as opposed to the old model, which is only based on compliance. The new model will reflect the progress that Lakewood is actually making. So despite all the obstacles, the district continues to move forward and continues to make progress. Why? Because the district has incredible staff members who make a difference every day. Everyone continues to work hard and everyone continues to move forward, however, the past two years has taken its toll on teachers and administration. Students and staff of the Lakewood School District need stability in a fair funding formula that does not divide its staff, students, families, and town by those who count and by those who do not. The reduction enforced in 2014-15, there were 22 staff members. In 2015-16, there was a reduction in force with 68 staff members. And in 2016-17, there was a reduction in force of 140 staff members. The number of teachers who resigned. So when we had a reduction in force of 22 staff members in 2014-15, we had 55 teachers who resigned. Now, this is only teachers, doesn't count, it doesn't count half-professionals, secretaries, or any other staff member. In 2015-16, there was a reduction of staff of 68 staff members. We had 51 teachers only resigning. In 2016-17, when we bricked 147 staff members. Now, this only counted the time between July 1st and June 30th. There were 23 staff members between that time. However, in 2017-18, there were 55 more, so really between the 2016-17, really there were 78 staff members. It's just that they were counted between July 1st. It was the time during that was counted. So really, the 2016-17 rift caused 78 teachers to leave the district. So we go to professional development. This counts public and non-public. So the amount of professional development Lakewood has spent, that is training teachers, in 15-16 was 1.7 million, 16-17, 2.4 million, and 17-18 was 2.7 million. If you compare it to towns, we compare it to Brick and Jackson. So we spend 1.7 in 15-16, Brick spends 1.4, Jackson 1.8. 16-17, we spend 2.4, Brick spends 1.7, Jackson 1.7. 17-18, we spend 2.7 million. Brick spends 1.6 million, Jackson spends 1.7 million. We train all of our teachers, I'll think all the teachers that we've trained and left over the past four years on success for all, language classes, grown New Jersey, TS Gold, inclusion phonemic awareness, mathematics, curriculum updates on curiosity corner, iReady, analyzing DRA, curriculum training, Sunday, playworks, dyslexia, science, close reading, Google training, restraint training, ELL workshop, ELA workshop, balanced literacy, differentiated instruction, developing high-quality questions, interactive read alouds, six plus one traits of writing, Lincoln training, data analysis, Orton-Gillingham, accountable talk, grade level focus standards, vocabulary strategies, cross-curricular connections, test-taking strategy, text-dependent questions, selection and analysis of mentor texts, small group instructions, PPSIS, PSYOP training, reading workshop, peer editing, student learning standards, analysis of writing examples, part evidence statements, Khan Academy, New Jersey Student Learning Standards. That's only to name a few. That's not even naming all the trainings that we have. So Lakewood School District spends millions of dollars on training teachers every year only to lose them to other districts. This then we cannot go on. So let me hire new teachers. So the teachers hired in 2014-15, they're coming in 4.84 years of teacher experience. 15-16, 5.95 years of teacher experience. 2016-17, 4.7 years of teaching experience. 17-18, 4.11 years of teaching experience, and millions of dollars in PT thrown out the window. So what is the answer? Special funding for Lakewood? So we compared Lakewood to Atlantic City School District. Because we know that Lakewood Public Schools is no less needy than Atlantic City Public Schools, receiving millions of additional state dollars. So just some facts, New Jersey has not followed a statutory formula for funding school budgets since its first year in law in 28-29, and was cut in 2010-11. In its first year in 28-29, it was statutorily funded, not fully funded. Currently, there is no partner school funding formula that allows the flexibility to provide additional aid to school districts in distress or that are unique. The Lakewood School District is unlike any school district in New Jersey with 6,100 public school students and over 30,000 non-public school students for which the school funding formula does not work. The Atlantic City School District received additional funds, not alone, in the 2016-17 school year through Senate Bill 83983-S2574, which was approved in June of 2015. In the 2017-18 State of New Jersey Budget Summary, page 41, the Atlantic City School District is slated to receive $32 million in discretionary school aid called commercial valuation stabilization aid. Lakewood needs discretionary aid, not more loans. The per capita income, Lakewood Township's per capita is $15,124, Atlantic City's per capita is $18,162, and New Jersey's state capita is $36,582. The median household income, Lakewood's township is $40,983, Atlantic City's median household income is $25,737, New Jersey's state median income is $72,93. So Lakewood's median income is $31,113 below the state median. Lakewood has the highest poverty level in Ocean County at 32.1 percent, Atlantic City is 36.9 percent, and the state poverty level is 10.8 percent. So if you look at Lakewood and Atlantic City versus the Abbott District's per income and percent of population living below the poverty level, Lakewood's per capita income is 15,124, and the percent living below the poverty level is 32.1 percent. They led in Atlantic City, the per capita is 18,162, and their poverty level, percent of the population living below the poverty level is 36.9 percent. And if you look at the Asbury Park, it's 23,761 per capita, and their percent population living below is 31.9 percent. And you can see the other Abbott Districts who are getting a lot more money than Lakewood. So if you look at the demographics of the Lakewood Public Schools compared to Atlantic City, you see that Lakewood Hispanic percentage is 85 percent, Atlantic City is 40 percent, African-American in Lakewood is 9 percent, Atlantic City is 36 percent. The percentage of white in Lakewood is 5 percent, Atlantic City is 6 percent, other in Lakewood is 1 percent, other in Atlantic City is 18 percent. The graduation rate in Lakewood is 75.1 percent, and Atlantic City is 76.1 percent. You look at the free lunch and breakfast program, all the students in Lakewood receive free breakfast and lunch through the community eligibility program. According to the National School Lunch Program, Atlantic City students, 70 percent of the students in Atlantic City receive free lunch and breakfast. So if you look at the New Jersey state aid, you can look from 2011 to the present time, you can see that not much has changed as far as state aid, regardless of how many students we receive in Lakewood, state aid basically has stayed the same. And due to the fact that Lakewood School District wasn't a deficit, state aid advances, or you can call them loans, were obtained in an effort to maintain a thorough and efficient education. So in 2015-16, the district received $4.5 million in loans, 2016-17, $5.6 million in loans, 2017-18, $8.5 million. The municipality of Lakewood provides $1 million to Lakewood School District in order to bus public school courtesy students. No monies are paid for non-public school courtesy students. So what makes Lakewood unique? So if you look at the 2000 consensus, Lakewood population was 60,352. The 2010 consensus, Lakewood population was 92,843. So that was a 54 percent growth. Lakewood's population increased by more than 32,000 people between 2000 and 2010. So Lakewood is the fastest-growing town in Ocean County, and the prediction by the APP is that the population of Lakewood will be 230,000 people by the year 2030. So if you look at the limited English proficient students from 2012-13, it was 1,160, and 2016-17, it was 1,830. So the number of students in the Lakewood school, the number of students attending public schools in 2009-10 was 5,215, and if you look 2016-17, it was 6,103. And the number of non-public school students receiving transportation in 2009-10 was 16,443. And if you look at 2015-16, it was 26,588. And of course, now the LSTA is transporting them. So according to 2010 census, the percentage of students, percentage of population under five years old in Lakewood is 19.5 percent. You see what a difference in the rest of Ocean County, the power at 5.7 percent. The next highest would be, Asbury Park is 7.7 percent. And the percentage of population under 18 years old in Lakewood is 48.4 percent, and the rest of Ocean County is 23.4 percent. Where a lot of people think there's a big senior population in Lakewood, it's really only 4.3 percent, whereas the rest of Ocean County has a much higher population of senior citizens over 65. If you look at special education in district and out of district, in 2011-12 is 1,017, 2016-17 is 1,254, and the projected special education cost in 2017-18 is $32 million. And you can see how much non-public chapter Y, 2093 services, up in 2009-10, was 7,647, and if you look at 2016-17, it was 19,335. And E and D went from 1,500 to 4,183, just the E and D alone. Does anyone have any questions before we move on to the next presentation?
Through the chair. What I'm asking, some of the board members asked me, and I'm not sure, so I ask you or the monitors. What I don't understand is that if the district is a deficit and continues to take loans, first of all, why do we have to pay those loans back? Does anyone know that?
Loans are supposed to be paid back in a 10-year period, or 10-year period. As far as 17-18 budget, the agreement with the Department of Education, the district was allowed for no paying back the loans during the current school year. However, the district wrote an email to the state about this. The funding statement for the district just came out in December 16th, I think, is still listing paying back a little over a million dollars this year. 450,000 for the one, 514,000 for the other, or 64,000, whatever it was. And so we're trying to get that corrected for the current year. Ordinarily, it's a 10-year period.
So we're clear that for this current year, we're not paying back.
We're not supposed to be paying back, however, as of today, the district is paying back.
So what happens if we have to pay back what we thought we didn't have to pay back?
There'll be a million-dollar deficit in the current year. But that's, they've been working on this for a couple of months, have emails dating back.
No, we, it's not, but we obviously know that the old Mr. Tharrah did not pay back the money. So the board needs to be aware, let's say in simple English, and if I get this, for the 17-18 school year, we were not supposed to pay back money.
Correct.
And now, all of a sudden...
The cable came out, when we got the state aid notice, it was on there, and that was back in the August, we got the payment schedule, and... in August, we got the payment schedule, and I've been trying to get that corrected since then.
So again, and Mr. Schaffler, who does work, I can attest, since we speak at very strange hours, but right now, this is news that we all need to know, despite assurances by the state that we were not going to have to pay back what's called a loan this year. Now we are being told we have to pay back a lot of loans.
Treasury is doing that, but DOE is still saying, no, we don't have to pay it back. So it's an internal thing between the two departments of the state.
Let me say, my opinions on the state are well-known, but my question is, where do we get the money from? The Treasury or the Department of Education?
Treasury.
So is there some sort of action we need to take, as you and, I'm sure, I know you and Mr. Azara have been working on this, but what happens if assurances that we don't have to pay back the money don't come true?
I don't think I have to take action yet. You may have to now, but not tonight.
When would be a good time to, so we don't have to do our usual dance here, which is reduction in force, which is ruin morale, which is ruin students' lives, which is then blame everyone but then the Trenton. When do we need to take action? How much more time shall we give till we are all screwed and then everyone else blame but the people sitting in that nice little, by the baseball stadium in Trenton?
I could give them a lot of money.
Okay.
I just sent an email out today.
Okay. Again, for the public's benefit and the board's benefit, since you are volunteers, even though some of you are involved in education, Mrs. Winters, I see on this presentation, it sounds like a never-ending conundrum in English. It seems like if we're in deficit every year and if we're borrowing every year, and what is this new thing? What I don't get, I'll be very candid, and again, I'm not here to make friends, but the time has come. The state monitors are here. What I didn't see mentioned, I saw in your presentation, and I did try to say it to the press the other day, is the amount of audit findings has gone down. That's a positive.
Correct.
I didn't see that in the state CUSAC, how come?
That is not one of the requirements of CUSAC.
All right, so I want the board to know, while the monitors and I don't always agree, and I will state this publicly, the business office runs the business office. The monitors are here to ensure compliance and ensure that the business office is following mandates, which Mr. Schaffler and I discussed today. But we need to give credit to the monitors, and I don't need anything from them, that the audit findings have drastically gone down. That was not stressed, and I don't understand how you don't think... Well, what I don't really understand here is why is no one from the administration or the monitors saying to the people in the state, hey, you're not, like, we're never getting out of this. Like, how many times are we gonna have? I'll say this, the public, it's one community against the other. I think despite the happy fest of last night and other such things, I think the communities in Lakewood are finally realizing that Trenton enjoys when everyone fights against everyone else here in Lakewood. How are we getting out of this where we could never score out of CUSAC? We're always gonna be in deficit. Where, what's the solution? I defer to the state monitor, I defer to the superintendent. How do we get out of this other than people down 195, hoping, which will not happen while I'm here, hoping that one community in this town fights another? What is their answer to you about how we get out of this not-ending situation on their outdated, non-tailored-to-Lakewood CUSAC? What is the answer?
By applying for the equivalency.
So that's something I saw in passing. So when we discuss the public and the board, what does that mean in the CUSAC?
So I apply for the equivalency and I'm applying for the new growth model of the CUSAC. So that way that I can show growth, by showing growth that we have, like, we have shown growth, that they're going to measure Lakewood on a different model of CUSAC. Not, it won't be compliance only, it'll be more on growth.
So if that's available, why haven't we done that yet?
Because we didn't qualify for it. You had to make the 80% mark, which we didn't. But now that they're going to reconfigure our numbers, this is what I was told today.
Wait, who's the "they" reconfiguring?
The county office and Georgia Department of Defense is going to, they are going to reconfigure our numbers.
So we are, again, and I think the board who are volunteers, and some of them do ask these things, and then they ask me, but I want everyone to hear the same response. The State Department of Education has told me today, or yesterday, or...
Both, yesterday and today.
That we can use a different formula.
A different model of CUSAC. It's a new model. The old model was a compliance model, this new model is a growth model.
Do we, does the board have to vote on that? Do we have to do something?
No, I just have to apply for it. They sent it to me today. I can forward it to the papers. I'll forward it to everyone.
Right, and can you post that on the website too?
Sure.
Because I think a large part of the problem here is, and again, I don't care if my contract's under review, I don't, no one's holding me hostage anymore. I don't understand how we see a presentation like this, we have two monitors here, and I discussed this with them after the article came out, they didn't even have an exit meeting with the same people that did the CUSAC, who you worked for, you worked for the Department of Education in Trenton, correct? The people in Trenton did this CUSAC thing, and you did not know that? I have, I believe you, trust me. But I'm trying to figure out where this disconnect is between one bureaucrat in Trenton and the other bureaucrat in Trenton. Give up? I don't give up. So, and this is not directed at you and Mr. Azara, because while we differ on certain things, but come to a consensus, what I learned after the article, Asbury Park Press Report should know, is that these CUSAC numbers came out, tell me if I'm wrong, and the monitors were learning about them just as the reader of the Asbury Park Press was. That's correct. That is, I give an F on CUSAC to the state. Because I do not, again, I'm, listen, we're in a problem situation here, and I don't understand, again, these guys don't work for free, nor do I. The State Department comes up with scores, I'm trying to learn this, and they don't discuss it with the state monitors, who they're telling us, we have that, who we fund, there seems to be a missing...
I can tell you another district that I was in, there was CUSAC. The scores came in, we met with the administration to refute the scores. And gave them additional information, and the final scores came in after that.
So we missed a step here, I'll say. So who do we write to in these many bureaucratic meetings and other things? Things, I'll use the word. Who do we write to? Because again, what I'm hearing from Mr. Schaffler is that in other districts, in Camden, I'm assuming he's talking about, okay, that CUSAC gives scores to the state. Then they speak to the state monitors, the administration, then they refuse those scores, and then they come out with new scores. I get that one. So why did we miss that step here? I'm trying to understand, how many more bureaucrats can there be in Trenton who just wait for the next bus rally, which will happen? But this year, it's not gonna happen in May, it's gonna happen in January, and February, and March, and April, and May, and June, and every leader of this town is gonna be there because something is missing. And I asked Mr. Schaffler to immediately act shortly, as I know Mr. Azara was surprised by these scores. Who is accountable for this? I don't know. Who? It's not the board, you see, they're volunteers. It's not me, because my job description doesn't cover meeting with CUSAC bureaucrats. So who, why didn't that happen here? Who would like to tell the board?
I can tell you that I work with the county superintendent.
Well, that's interesting you bring that up, because the county superintendent, I believe you invited to this meeting tonight, correct?
Yes, I did.
Is the county superintendent here? Look under your chairs. Is she here? No. So why are they not here?
She was unable to make it.
Unable to make it. So I want the public and the board to know that there seems to be a not-ending situation here.
I have a question.
Go, please, I would love someone else to chime in here because...
Were you given the chance to provide the documentation? So some of the things that there were zeros that you said wasn't true, were you given that opportunity to provide documentation for that? Did they give you that chance?
No, we received the scores by email.
And that was it? So like, in the other district, when they're allowed to, because I know in other districts that, you know, you get your scores, but if you have a dispute, you shouldn't be given that time to, you know, okay, you're saying this, but this is the documentation, so you tell me you never even got that, and then it just ended up in the paper?
I think what the board members are saying very clearly, was there an opportunity by...
To correct it or to make sure...
Or refute it or something.
Or show documentation.
Right, no, we never sat down to discuss this work.
So what you're saying, unlike maybe Asbury Park, Camden, or something, where there's this discussion...
Excellent, excellent.
Exit conference, discussion period. We have two monitors here, okay? One here quite often, one working from home due to medical issues, still working. Why did we miss that here? Let me just make sure, the board didn't say no not to have that meeting, right?
They did not.
Did the state offer to make the meeting, or they didn't say that's a question?
No, they did not.
So who is going to tell the state other than me, from this administration or the monitors, that this is not acceptable? Like, when does that happen? What other state monitors, or the superintendent, or both, instead of, you know, just, how much more do we go through this? Because in the end, the only people who get hurt are public school students, not the people in Trenton that work their way to retire, or don't work their way to retirement. How do we get this correct? Who is gonna do this? Is it the monitors, or the superintendent, or both?
Well, I had a conference call with them, we spoke about tonight, and had it move forward and do the equivalency application, to apply for equivalency.
Let's talk about another thing, if I could.
As far as equivalency, that's gonna be rescored, the CUSAC that adhered to this gun, so maybe different scores.
Is it perspective or fact?
They're going to look at, they're going to reconfigure these four, yes.
So they're gonna take that. You see, what bothers me is that people, and I forget, the papers take them for what their word, doesn't matter, we have to work on reality, not fantasy. But why does it take an article for the state to wake up, to now reconfigure, you know what I'm saying? Why wasn't this offered to the district beforehand? I'm missing something. All of you, I know you're concerned, and I know you can express this privately, this is the time to discuss it. We are here, you and I are accountable to the public, and the public thinks you're sitting on your laurels, but just so you know what's going on...
I think every year, CUSAC unfairly scores Lakewood. In the past, we have challenged it, I remember from last year or year before, especially because the administration was, and they just dig in the hills and they don't respond to many months, and when they do respond, they just basically write that, just stand by our decision for our scoring.
And just so the public is aware, these CUSAC scores are dealing with 16-17, so that's through June 30th, 2017. So it's not reflective, what I, let me ask the superintendent, why it's so important and a credit to this board, when you cancel meetings, that's a minus on this CUSAC thing, right?
Yes.
So thank God, since August 17th, you haven't canceled the meeting. Congratulations to you. That's positive, I guess. But I think the board, I think what's stupefying to me is that I have a state employee to my left who is learning, as I'm learning, about equalization, what else is called equalization?
Equivalence.
Equivalency. And, okay, so when you apply, which is, again, you just mentioned about this today, or yesterday? Okay, so this, why wouldn't they do this equivalency thing before we get into this whole again?
Our scores didn't allow us to apply.
And now they do?
After they reconfigured it.
Reconfigured, so they reconfigured from the time of the Asbury Park Press article till today, is that the reconfiguration?
After they were notified, correct.
I have a question, indecipherable, we're told that it doesn't affect us financially, the CUSAC score, so then still the reality? Does it affect us financially? No.
But it doesn't look good for parents who are...
Academically, it doesn't look good at all.
If you were a parent in the public...
Again, Trenton, the Trenton, and this is a response we got many times from them, they, A, did not respond to many inquiries, not only from Lakewood, but from statewide, because we get a lot of complaints, and B, in our case, when we did get a response, they just, again, they dug in the hills and they said that, just stand by our scores, decisions.
Well, actually, there's news here.
They don't, they ignore, they ignore reality, they ignore evidence, they ignore hard numbers, they just leave the different reality.
So like, up there, it said timelines weren't being, we have documentation that this was turned in at certain times, you're telling me they're gonna stand by that you didn't turn in, you have the date saying...
They have alternative facts.
Well, I have a question, actually, there is something positive about getting this right. For the first time, New Jersey Department of Ed is willing to use an equivalency formula, which is different than CUSAC. Is that right?
It's a new model.
And you have to apply for it? Like, what do you do? Hopefully, we all know, call the scoop, or the press, or the ledger, who do we call to make sure they follow through like this? It seems like, what, is there like, do they, like, do you have to be qualified for this? Or did they tell you they're gonna do this?
I have to fill out the forms.
That's it?
From the department, yes.
What's the timetable for them to respond? Right, well, no, it's...
I just fill out the forms to the Jersey Department, I give county superintendent, and they go through the process.
So they told you, Mrs. Winters, and I don't think you've been on the spot, but the time has come for someone to fess up, as we say in Lakewood, to what's going on here. And these guys, I like them, but they don't even, they're learning with me. They're learning with me, which is almost incredible. You're learning as of yesterday, so I want to get it again, there's this equivalency thing, equivalency, you send in a request, dear commissioner who's leaving shortly, I would like you to make us the equivalency formula. Sincerely yours, Laura Winters. And then she says, before she leaves ultimately, yes. Does she have to say yes? Is there like an option for them to say no?
I'm sure they can say no.
But they told you already, they're working on reconfiguring.
Yes.
Let's ask another question, on that, about bilingual child study teams.
Yes, I have one.
Now, I know by chance, we have at least five child study team members, if not more, I'll do this quickly, who speak Spanish and English. Are they aware of that? No, I don't know. It doesn't seem like anyone knows what the hell they're aware of here.
And they said, completely, the whole bilingual CST, the whole CST is supposed to be bilingual?
Who, where did that come from?
Yeah, that's crazy. It was noted that the, another state monitor, that was a conversation they had with the state monitor last year.
And it's not Azara?
Yes.
So it's not Azara, Michelin, oh, the Sinatra on Frank's, yeah. So there should, so do we have bilingual child study teams, which is important?
Yes, we do.
Do they know that?
Yes, I do. I had the conversation yesterday.
So they can provide an documentation and that we have it?
Yes.
So probably, you see, what's bothering me for this board and for the public school students, is why wouldn't they know that? Like, they seem to know how much, they seem to know how much is a lot of money. They seem to know even the most minute difference, like, why wouldn't they know, hi, they come to the door, hi, how many child study team members do you have? Forty-seven. Uh, okay, I don't remember. How many speak Spanish and English? Five. Did that process take, I'm missing something here.
I guess there was a conversation I had that there was all...
Well, let me, wait, sorry, a conversation. I surely wasn't part of it because I wasn't here. The board wasn't part of it. Were you part of it? No, you were here or you were some other role. Okay, was any one of the public part of it? Who was part of this conversation?
The CUSAC team when they came last year.
During the 16-17 school year, they came from Trenton, no, from the county.
From the county.
And said, do you have bilingual child study team members?
No, I don't believe that's the question. I don't really, I was not on the conversation. They interviewed people when they were here.
Did someone affirmatively say, when cases, that's, this is what the school is about? It's about students' lives, but you have to put into a legal context. Did someone say, we have these bilingual child study team members?
No, it was expressed, there was a need to have a child, bilingual child study team. So that was expressed...
That was expressed by Mrs. Sinatra?
Yes, to the county.
So that, 'cause she hasn't been here since when?
I don't know.
Last year, April.
Okay, so can, can we refute that? Can we say, look? Not only can we say, look, but do you know how many of the publics know this and do know these type things? We get many child study team members who are bilingual. They come to Lakewood, you train them, and then they go off elsewhere. They go elsewhere. I can name three just from the last year and a half. What are we doing about that? Uh, how, do we need a monitor, like an advertising monitor? What, what do we, what do we do about that? See, I can't sit quietly here anymore, everything I've been behaving, but the time has come. I'm reading this, I meet the people in the community quite often in my office. We are both beginning to realize we need the life of the community. And I'm, I'm not talking about community, all colored religions, creed, languages, that there's a problem here and it needs to be looked at more globally. But I'm looking at this presentation with some of it I didn't see before tonight and I'm asking like, aren't those like easy questions?
Yes.
Like, you don't have to be a professor at Harvard. You don't have to be a professor at Harvard. Like, let me ask the monitors, was this concerning the board? But for some reason, you guys, gender neutral, sit here quietly and then the public thinks you're not doing anything. Where are we up to with the budget for next year? Now, I'll be, what I know by chance, but even though they know everything, is that Mr. Finger is working on the budget. Is that a correct statement? Someone pug?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That I learned after I was asked a question by your friend. Okay, so he's working on the budget. When is, um, like, how do we avoid a May situation again? Where every teacher gets a RIF or whatever, whatever. How do we, how do we avoid, what's the plan? What's the plan? Here we are. Right, right, what's, yeah. What's the plan other than busting students? At this time, there'll be thirty-six thousand students, I hope. What is the plan other than waiting till May? After all the teachers get RIFs or whatever they're called? What, is there a plan here? Monitors, please help me. Superintendent, please help me. Because it's gonna get to a point where there's gonna be a legal problem here. Because after a while, public school students are going to have a very good lawyer representing them. And it's gonna be saying that they're not getting a thorough and efficient education. And they're gonna wait. So what is the plan now? What is the plan? How are we avoiding the May disaster? Who has a plan? What are the monitors' plan? What is the superintendent's plan? What is the plan? Don't you wanna know what this plan is?
Yes.
Don't you wanna know this?
We were told about it every year, every year.
Every year there's a plan.
Every year I'm told that the monitors are writing letters and the monitors are, we have meetings in Trenton and they're asking for money.
Well, they are. You are. Okay, but it seems like that plan is no good because I'm your fault. And it's not my desire, it ain't working. It ain't working, right?
Two things that are happening is that Mr. Finger will be making a presentation January the fourth of the organization, the first much presentation in general terms.
Um, I didn't know that.
You have to learn, you have to...
January fourth, I need to point you over, okay? January fourth, there'll be a budget presentation now, you know that. What's the second?
We still have that conversation before me that, uh, we have to, you know, a year like last year. When they get the loan, come us in March.
Oh.
On June.
Okay.
We lay everybody off and they all leave and find their jobs.
Which again, I wanna make this clear, this is not about the monitors. That doesn't mean we don't differ at all. But they are apparently on a learning curve here, like the CUSAC thing. Like, it's not like you have a special in there to know what's going, it seems that way, right?
It's complicated because you have to change the administration. So even if you have a department, what's gonna happen?
Right. So we don't get these loans, I guess we're banking on loans again. Where, is that, is that our answer here?
No.
You would like full funding, I would like to win the lottery, so, but...
It's possible with them.
Wait, wait, hold on again, they, Mr. Monitor, shut, they were shut. We would like to get full funding. You know, we haven't gotten that ever.
And no progration of extraordinary.
Okay.
Two things alone would...
You are in the right season for asking these things. It's a holiday season, maybe Santa will come. But it doesn't seem to happen that it will come here.
Part that you may not like is that, you know...
I like all parts.
If you start, if the department starts counting some, some percentage of non-public school students, your funding formulas will also allow the district to raise taxes as a partial, instead of just raising taxes on the public.
But you didn't say that's low.
So right now, you have, if your public school enrollment of, say, six thousand.
Right.
And it goes up fifty, fifty students, you get nothing.
Right.
Nothing, it goes up maybe to eight hundred students, I mean, forty, fifty-two hundred students could raise taxes over forty-two percent.
Local tax, local tax.
Meanwhile, what's happening with that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not voting for this but a non-public enrollment is growing much faster.
It is, that is...
It's been a public school enrollment. And you take the percentage of those who are adding student enrollment and you have our special needs for not counted in the formula. Likewise, transportation, yes, you get the difference between seven hundred and ten dollars and a thousand dollars as a category at the end of the year.
Right.
But the difference from zero to seven hundred and ten for an enrollment for recent two thousand students, which is two million dollars.
Right.
The local budget has to pay for that, but you can't pay taxes to fulfill it and you can't get more funding to do it. So right now, it's just the scoring program.
So let, so other than putting fences around Lakewood, which doesn't seem to be working legally, Jackson, Pomona, New York, or other places saying, don't move here. Okay, so let me get this, I wanna get this right. Because this is another misconception, the LSTA, they do not help the public. Do we pay for that? Does state pay for that? Who pays for that?
The school district pays the LSTA one thousand dollars for mandated students.
Okay.
The state reimburses the district, the difference between seven hundred and ten dollars and one thousand dollars. So far, that is, it used to be seven hundred and ten and eight hundred and forty.
Right.
But then, uh, they just raised it to a thousand dollars. But the difference from zero to seven hundred and ten, that's coming strictly out of the local budget because transportation aid has not been, the state aid has been increased. And you can't raise taxes more than two percent. So what it means is...
It's taking away some of this pie that we have. But legally, we would both agree, we can't not bust students under the current law, which we can't change.
Of course.
So we have to bust those students. So other than saying that, so that's not something we can change. What is the plan? We're not, it's not happening.
The plan is that with this preliminary presentation, then we'll have some numbers available. This will have some numbers available to give to the state saying, this is what's happening right now.
And what, do we need money? Like junkies. But we need money. Now, let me also say this, so the teachers who are here and some of all their fellow teachers, the LEA contract and the LAA, which is the teachers and the administrators, is up this year. June 30th, right?
Correct.
We have to start negotiating, which we're doing right after the new year. How does the board negotiate in good faith with the teachers union and the administrators union if they don't know how much money they have to negotiate with? Now, again, I'm not that smart, but I...
There's a way to do that, but we should not be discussing it.
There is a way to do that, okay, just, I don't wanna...
We shouldn't be discussing that.
Oh, I'm just asking in general, I don't understand if you don't know how much money you're getting, having to negotiate. But if you have a way, then I would see that too.
Just a step back, you said about the one million dollar loan, or, they put a five million dollar loan. In the terms that we accepted it, I think you had accepted it independent of us, was there some sort of stipulation that it would not have to be charged for the first year or two? Was that part of the language that wasn't, that might not work? Loan for this year, the first payment will be due next year.
That was agreed.
That's, that's how it always is.
It's a half of all the side...
Well, what happened was the loans, the prior loans are supposed, were supposed to start coming out and...
Wasn't there a three-year, three-year agreement or something? Now, I think David's saying...
It was a one-year, it was a one-year agreement.
There's several, maybe you saw that chart.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Fifteen, sixteen years coming due now. Wait, but, but I think you're asking, which David has just shot.
There's two, there's two loans of four point five million, there's one loan of five point six four million.
No, I actually wrote down, one's for four point five, one's for five point six, one's for eight point five.
There's two four point fives.
Oh, there's two four point fives? One's a million, yeah, four point five. So what you're asking, which I think David answered already, is we weren't supposed to have to pay one of the older loans back this year.
Instead of getting a, a new loan for ten million, you know, for nine and a half million dollars, they said, okay, you won't have to pay back the million dollars this year and then we'll loan you eight and a half million dollars.
So now they're saying we do have to pay it back.
It's been coming out of the state aid.
Since September.
Since September, but the department that keeps telling me that we'll be straightening down.
So you will be reimbursed for what they took out?
Yeah, if, no, or what came out, we'll, we'll get back in, towards the end of the year.
With interest?
No interest.
No. So...
Michael, will we go back to the plan?
Yeah, the plan, but isn't the plan, don't, Miss Winter, I know you have a lot of people to present here, but...
Why don't we just go back to the plan? So can I say something?
Sure, I, I just want the board to get some answers here, but I...
I'd like to answer.
Okay, sure.
So what we did, I had the supervisors here do a budget.
Oh.
And the principals, so they all did a budget and they returned it to me on December 18th. But I had them do a budget like a, a regular district would do a budget.
But we're not a regular district.
But that didn't matter. I, I pretend I'm a regular district, but, uh, a regular district. And they did not, like, we were in, they budgeted as if we weren't in a deficit. So that we can come up with a number, uh, for future years so we could survive. So they could perform in a, like, a regular district. So that our kids could have things like every other district.
You see, let me say this, you know, I'm, I'm, there's not many people from the public here officially tonight. And there's no reporters here because it's holiday.
Not important.
Not important, okay? But what you just said, please don't take this to a lie.
Okay.
You told the people to prepare numbers as if we're not in debt.
Correct.
Correct.
You both say correct. But we already...
We agree on this.
Right.
So what's, no, no, I, it's a good idea, I guess. You, you, you plan a budget as if you're not in deficit. That's like me planning like, uh, on overweight, okay? Uh, and buying aside thirty-two weights, but I'm much more than that.
Well, listen to the plan.
No, wait, let me get this, so, because I'm really getting to...
The tuitioners.
I need to be on the other side and I think this is getting to me already. You're planning a budget as if we're not in deficit. I understand why you're doing that. And then it gets plugged into a budget. And then we say to someone, we don't have this money.
First of all, what happens is, so now the principals and supervisors, they gave their information.
Their wish list.
Well, it wasn't supposed to be a wish list.
It's not a wish list.
There was supposed to be things and they really need this, and they don't have it. Not a wish list.
Okay.
We wish we had what we need. And then there's gonna be meetings to see what on that list will make it into the budget.
They're giving revenue.
What in that list is important enough to be invited.
Okay, I understand.
And then that's, that gets put in as, maybe there's some schools need a program. I saw this, it's an ABA program.
Yes.
Or maybe two other schools need those ABA programs also.
They do.
And, and they're not there.
Or maybe we need some buildings. What, how does that ever happen here?
Well, maybe we should go to the state and ask for the money, so...
Well, and as the public knows, or should know, there are several avenues, both legal and otherwise, that are being developed. But I go back to Charlotte Conlive days, which receives all of you, or most of you. This has been going on for twenty, twenty-five years where I have all these neat data charts and everyone says we are legally our love and then we don't have the money. I'm just trying to figure it out because I don't wanna be the victim here in minutes. Okay, I, I won't, there's no, right, because I, I, at the end of the year, I will show you how we save money. I, I, as we have shown you already. But this is not about me, because I can leave tomorrow. How are the public school students getting what they need? And I'm talking to the deferred people, like, so who do I, who do we call? Who do we call? Who do we call? We're gonna see this neat presentation, which is good. And all the people here hosted, actually, all of us, I know are good. I'm gonna flatter them, they work hard, and they're gonna show us all these grand or ideas. And then we're gonna have a love fest at Finesse. And then we're gonna do all of these nice things. Now what's gonna be the end of, what's the end?
They're actually showing all the things that are gonna be done, aren't they?
No, we are doing, you know, can you pull up, where is Mr. Jeff? Can you pull up that slide about how much money we are spending on training our staff?
I have a question, man, why do we spend a million dollars more than other places?
Because we have the only, Glenn, would you give me this urban misery, because that's good. Because we have the most needy, is that okay? The most needy children, Ocean County. I invite you to go to any of, I go, I sue them. I have not seen a district that, go to those numbers.
Well, actually, a superintendent in other districts stood up and had a meeting and told me, Lakewood, whatever you're doing, keep doing because we love getting your teachers and your administrators, because you train them so well. They, they thank you.
Actually, I heard somewhere that Mrs. Stein, who's our math coordinator, was the title. She produced a manual that some other districts now wanna get a copy of.
Correct.
So here, what I saw here, to answer your question, this is nice to have this question, isn't it? Like, you know, the food's great, uh, look how much money we're spending in comparison to Bricktown, Jackson. So you may ask innocently, because you are a nice fellow, why are we spending so much money? Well, if you happen to ever be in Bricktown schools, their failing, their specialist students do have enough business there as in Jackson, many of them, not all. But we have a district, where is that poverty thing? I didn't get charmed about how poor we are here. Our kids. No, no.
Can we all get a copy of this?
Yeah, it's on the website.
This is?
Yes.
Well, not this one.
No, the Atlantic City one was.
The Atlantic City one.
Atlantic City one was and this will be. Here, this is why we're spending so much money. Tell me if someone differs. If the kids come from, there's many studies on this, because I use them in court. If you come from, I'll use simple wording, or home, whatever the word is, the phone, or a, uh, not native English speaking home, or, or a single family home, or a not native English speaking home, or a single family home, or you can go with all those variables, we're going to need more intense teaching. Isn't that a fair statement?
Yeah.
So that is why we're spending this money, but what is concerning is, we, the local taxpayers, are spending this money.
Training them.
Training them, and then sending them to Tom's River, or Jackson.
And Neeks.
And they, and they go, and then we start, so what, what is the end game? We have to monitor, we're warming up. Warm it up. What is the end game here?
Would it be a stipulation that people have to stay on?
That's called indentured servitude.
I can't do that.
No, can't do that. Maybe, you know, I'm sorry that I'm asking all these questions, but I just not, again, I don't want, the board is as stupefied as everyone else. So you have people here to make presentations about all the good things we're doing.
It's about all the wonderful things we're doing.
How many people think we're not doing wonderful things? We're doing wonderful things. Who thinks we're not? Does anyone think we're not doing anything wonderful? Vice President of Union, do you think we're not doing wonderful things here?
I think that all the teachers and the staff are very hard.
You see that? Glenn, do you think we're not doing wonderful things here? Do we need this president? We're doing great things here, right? Okay, so.
Can I say as a parent, there, if my daughter is in the second grade, I love her, but Lakewood is doing the thing.
Okay, so, so we, Miss Winters, we appreciate all these people coming here. I know this is changing from the plan. We know our staff is working hard. Let's have a hand for our staff. We know, we know that you're working hard. Let's have a hand for everyone. Let's have a big happy hand. But now the time has come not to see more of the same. We know these people are working hard, right? No one's questioning that. The people who need to consume this hardly being not here, they're not here. So please don't take this to a lie, and I know you've worked hard on your presentations. I'm sure we can get Jim to take you, and then we can put it on the video, and we can all watch Happy, like Happy Days. We could all watch the bonds, we can do that. But now let's get to the problem. Doesn't the board agree? Doesn't the board agree? Solve the problem. Let's solve the problem. So I would ask the board president to, of course, unless the monitors upset also, do we need to see more happy stuff? We're seeing happy stuff. Can you show me that teacher screen? The one where every year we lose, I don't know, the latest number was seventy-five, and you add.
Is there, is there a number of how long teachers get this average?
How long?
Versus all other learning districts.
How many teachers leave?
You know, where we add fifty-five, oh. So let me get this right. We have trained, when I say we, not us, you, have trained seventy-eight teachers who left us for the school year. So, okay, so what is the solution? Let me guess, we're going to have a happy horse show here. Everyone's going to tell us all the great things we do. We know you do great things. We do. We know, this is Palatino, I worked with today with a kid, most districts who I sue don't do that.
What about other districts? How many leave other districts?
Not seventy-eight. Not seventy-eight.
Why are they leaving? Why are they leaving?
Because you, because your building is.
Because?
On my phone, if I'm in here.
Well, I think.
Absolutely, if I'm being ripped, and I'm coming from, every year at the end of the year, it's. What'd you say?
There's still a future.
There's still a future, and when it comes, I have a family to take care of. If every year I'm getting ripped, and I don't know if I have a job, if I don't know how to have job security somewhere else, that's where I'm going to go.
Even if you're a dedicated teacher, even if you're a lightweight liberal like I am when it comes to education only, you leave here, you go five miles north, or whatever way Jackson is, okay, towards Great Adventure, okay? And you leave here, this is Union, would you agree with that? That's what you do, I don't care if she agrees, that's a fact.
She said no.
Okay. What, you know, you leave here, Glenn, am I wrong? You leave here. So what is the plan? What is the plan other than bureaucrats blaming, inflaming one part of the community against another, which they do, that's my opinion? Other than blaming this on that and that on this? What is the plan? Can you bring the planners here? Where are the planners? Now, these are not the planners, these are the happy stories people. She's sending, wait, Mr. Bender, and again, he really does, he does care, I'll tell you. He's saying you're sending him an application. No, Shaefer, the application is so we don't get failing scores.
Where's the planners?
Where are the planners for the money? Team Addal, is that right?
Have I not been meeting with the planners?
No, you are. The board needs to hear this, that will be.
Senator Singer?
Tell them, tell them.
Michael, that's what we have the carve-out, we're trying to. Okay, so we have been meeting with Senator Singer regarding the carve-out plan. So we've been meeting with members of the community. Dr. Rush was attending, you, were you at the meeting?
Glenn was there.
Was at the meeting. President Bender was at the meeting, there were several members at.
I want the board to know that Miss Winters and the community is in meetings, Senator Singer is trying to get what's called a carve-out, that's why you have that Atlantic City comparison, because we're no less needy than them.
Atlantic City was a carve-out.
Right, that's what, that's one approach. There's another.
So we are working on that carve-out plan.
No.
The lawsuit.
There's a lawsuit about funding, but what are we doing in the immediate future?
So that is why I have all the budget sheets, I have all the principals working on all their budgeting for all the things that we need to have in the district, and so we can come up with a number for a potential carve-out plan. So that's what we plan on doing.
So we told the state this last year, what we need, and they said no layoff, one hundred and forty teachers. So how's that changing with us telling them again?
Well, I think that going with Senator Singer's carve-out plan in the end, this is more powerful than.
Well, that's a good question, and Miss Winters, again, this is not directed at you, because you have attempted and continue to attempt to get this, but you're not, we need, we're talking, we're all on the same page, everyone in this room's on the same page. We're, who are we missing? Who are we missing? We have the monitor here, he texted this to Azara for me, so he's, what, so who are we supposed to be, who are we supposed to be talking to?
Phil Mercy.
Once I have a number, we're having another, we're playing another meeting with Senator Singer, but I have to come up with this number.
That's what, okay, that's.
I come up with a number, and then as we plan another meeting.
And I want to, again, and I want, I speak to Miss Winters quite a few times a day, Mr. Schafter, Mr. Azara, they are working on trying to get a plan here. So I, again, what I am stupefied by is when I read the thing in the press about the CUSAC scores, and then Mr. Azara and Mr. Schafter, because I don't leave them alone, sometimes they get upset, I said, did you know about this? And they were like stupefied, but I made that up. It's like, do you work for the same place in Trenton? How many Trentons could there be where a bunch of bureaucrats get paid? Not many. So I'm just, I'm concerned, I'm concerned from a legal basis, because it's going to get to a point, despite all the happy shows and all the hard efforts, that children are going to say, and their parents with a very good attorney are going to say, enough's enough. And this board, it's not their fault. Like, let's get, let me get this, I want to ask some more public questions. Busing. Would you agree that we, let me get this right, there are how many public school students, public school who get courtesy, don't call it courtesy, hazardous, call it hazardous, busing? How many public school students get it? Many. The town pays all of that.
Correct.
Okay, good, so.
What if I find the money?
How much?
What if I find the money?
Okay, good.
So they're paying for the coming school year?
Well, they, according to Mr. Azara, that would, that they have to continue paying that for one more year, so that's what I understood.
Okay.
This coming year. Okay, now, non-public hazardous, and I said Jeep busing, here we use the non, use courtesy, hazard, whatever, and then we did a test, we had no busing one day, and had a few accidents, okay, I remember that one. But then we, all kinds of, we've tried everything here. The non-public hazardous busing, we don't pay for, do we? We don't pay for that.
We do not.
Okay, so that, that's important to know, because many don't.
Town speaker?
No. The LSTA, from what I understand, I'm not involved in that too much other than reading emails I'm posting, they get a certain amount of money for only required mandated busing. And they use the mandated pot of gold to bus both mandated and hazardous. So that's not costing us money. Okay, now let's go to another pot of gold.
Ever making money, does it leave some of our buses as well?
No.
No, we're not making money. Don't go that far. Okay, that's a good try, but we're not making money.
You helped her.
That was good.
I tried.
Okay, let me, let me understand this. Okay, that's, I'm trying to figure, you know, it's okay, because I like this guy to me, and he's safe with any money, so.
I know why you said that. Sixteen seventeen, we provided, we provided transportation as a contractor to the LSTA for about half a million dollars.
Okay, but we're not making money.
We're not doing that.
Wasn't there something about double pay for our bus charges that came up for double, for afternoon runs or something?
But we're not making money.
So it's not coming to, okay.
We're not making money. Okay, the next thing, how does the? This is Winter, the charter school. How many students are in the charter school now?
One hundred and fifty-two.
One hundred and fifty-two, so the public is aware of this. The charter school students, we, as a district, legally, have to pay for those students who go charter.
Correct.
We have to pay their busing.
Correct.
We have to provide their food.
Yes.
So is there a difference between their food and our public school students?
No, they get.
Oh, we don't pay? No, they get it from.
They get it from the.
They get it from, the charter school gets next number of dollars per student, with that, they have to buy their own food. But they, but what I'm, they always have to. But they eat our, we cook their food? All right. So are we going to have to budget for more kids going to a charter school, which I'm not saying will go right, I'm not getting involved in, but that's a reality.
Yes, every year, but next year will be two hundred and twenty-four.
Okay, two hundred and twenty kids, which comes out of the same pie of public.
Yes.
So what, so.
What's happening here, and I know what you're doing, but what's happening here is, and it happens with every school district, but it's even more so in Lakewood, is that you have certain things that have to be spent, no matter what, your special education has to be educated, whether they're in-house, or private school, or handicapped, your transportation has to be paid for, your charter schools have to be paid for, and as all these things go up, there's no, and the only thing that gets squeezed is your regular education, which is why a hundred and some teachers were given layoff slips, because that's the only thing that's left.
Right, but how do we prevent that?
Well, that's what we're talking about now.
So, Winter, the first option you mentioned is the carve-out that Senator Singer is working on, we did.
Yes.
We pray for him. We pray for us.
All right, so one bad step?
So that's one, but there, there is the hope that there was a funding formula, but I, and I don't know if Charlotte Conlon still lives in town, does it?
No.
But you can ask, and Chris has found this chart the other day, that's funny, for your items, quite a few years old. What's the next plan?
We have the, we have the.
And I know it's not you too, but I want us to do something now. I want us to do something now, to be needing to start, it worked very effectively, when you bust some hundred and some, how many kids, five buses it was, all of a sudden, Glenn, you'll give me that much, all of a sudden, the kids go to Trenton, and that next day, all of a sudden, they give eight point five million. Maybe we need to do that again.
Pressure is the only thing that.
Right, again, why are we not doing that? Why, and I'm not saying use kids for that, but us writing letters, lawsuits at the OAL, the Office of Administrative Law, take forever. What is the answer? Maybe we need to all go there, maybe we need to hold our next meeting outside there.
Is this taking a shipless to a private lot again?
Possibly, but possibly.
Why is the loan, why is the loan the answer? It's going, you're going to get another loan?
No, no, that's what Mr. Don was saying, we don't want any more.
We don't want, you want loans, you have to pay back loans, don't you? And now we're even told, we don't have to pay back loans, you do have to pay back, this is really a conundrum. So with the president's permission, and of course the superintendent, we do have members of the public here, maybe they can help us help ourselves. Isn't that great? Isn't that great? Is that okay, Mr. Bender?
Yes.
So, does anyone want to help us? Help us together? You're like, no. We're actually having an open discussion here. Isn't that great? Glenn, but seriously.
I, my only question is, we've been going through this over twenty years. We, we attracted state monitors to help us to solve the problem. We thought that when the state monitors came, that the state monitors would be a direct connection between Lakewood and the state. That the state monitor will say to the state, look, here's the problem, we need money. Well, that, in Lakewood, that doesn't happen, you know, we have the state monitors here, but we still have the same problem. So, so I really came tonight to wish you guys a happy.
We're still going to take that. We're going to stop you from doing that.
But sitting here, sitting here, I'm very confused, that here we are to go, ready to go into another year, and we're going into another year with the same uncertainties. And if we can't transfer uncertainty to our teachers.
Right.
Well, then everybody start looking for jobs. So I, I concur, we need to do something. I just don't know what it is to.
And you know what, Glenn, is it credit to the monitor of Zara?
No, no, I'm not, you know what, I'm not blaming them.
No, we're not blaming, but you know what they said honestly, and I give them credit, it's not a spending problem, it's a revenue problem. We don't have money. So.
Now, now we're going into a new administration, you know, Democrats coming in.
Maybe. That's great. Anyone else in the public want to address this issue? We're here to take any input, other than blame everyone else but ourselves.
Credit to, to our ministers.
We all concur on that. I know they really wanted to do these presentations, they are dying to do that.
Let's hear it.
Could we?
Let's hear the number that the monitor tells us how short we are.
Do we, do we want to, are you, Miss Winters?
Don't we have to go to all sections?
We, are you going to be upset, if the public be upset if we don't do this? The people who are supposed to be watching this did not show.
Every guy I've actually heard, you already know this.
Yeah, I think the public should hear it.
We should, we should.
They should hear this?
The public had enough.
At another meeting, it was actually.
Oh, okay, is the public okay if we delay this for a time? Yes, okay, public, yes, so could we, these poor people worked all day, they have to work tomorrow, we, we let them go? We let them do that?
Are they okay with this going?
Are you okay, or do you really want to do this?
Could you just get the final number without.
Is that okay? Are you going to be upset? We're going to invite you back, don't be worried. Okay, is that, is that okay? Laura, are you okay with that, Miss Winters?
Yes.
Okay, let's have a hand for her. Is there anyone else in the public? I do see other people in the public. Is there anyone else in the public who wants to address the board?
Any matter.
Yes, any matter, well. Thank you.
Save your notes, please.
Signed up. Robert Lawson.
Oh.
Robert Lawson. Okay. Wait, hold on a second. Mr. Kaiser. Let's see, Lawson.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Lawson. I'm sure it makes you know that I was a former chief of police in Lakewood, thirty-five years in the police department, about a decade as the police chief. When I retired, I opened a security company, well, Iron Rock Security. One of the things that really would keep me awake at night was worrying about the private schools in Lakewood. As you know, the public schools do have armed security that are hired by the school district, but the private schools really don't have any security. In my mind, they are definitely a potential threat to terrorism, if you see what's going on in the world around us. And that really was the impetus, the reason, the rationale, that I opened this security company, to provide security to the private schools. There was a lot of people that expressed interest in it. My company now is providing security to private schools in Lakewood. At that time, I didn't realize that to utilize money from the state for homeland security, we would have to go through a bidding process. The schools now are utilizing us, or paying it from their own school funds, and as I'm And as I'm sure you're aware, the funds in the schools are very, very tight. So anyway, we did put in a bid, and it's my understanding that all the bids were turned down. Names of the bid from my company, Iron Rock, was turned down because we didn't have the requisite stipulated three years of experience. I'm not sure if the board is aware of that. Think about it. Would you rather have a company from out of town who maybe has three years' experience, four years' experience, doesn't have a clue about providing security to the private schools in Lakewood? I think I bring a lot to the table in my company with my information, my relationships, and my sensitivity to the different cultural needs of different private schools in Lakewood. I, I just have many, many relationships with administrators, not only the private schools, but the public schools. I go back to the days of John Patrick, Ernie Canova, Mr. Loewig, Leah Silva, Eugenia Lawson. My relationship with the schools has been long and very positive, not just with the public schools, but with the private schools as well. I've received many awards, many, um, many times. I've been honored by private schools, by public schools, by Puerto Rican Association, by the NAACP. So I have a very good relationship with all of the minority communities in Lakewood, as well as the private schools in Lakewood. So I'm not gonna bore you with really any more details. I am invested in this community. I've lived here for 44 years. I'm on the board of Kimball. I've spent many years in the Ocean County Mental Health Association. And I, I can go on and on and on. But I just want to make the board aware that by putting this three-year stipulation on accepting the bid, that you're potentially losing out with somebody, a company with a lot of experience that I have, performing different security and policing in Lakewood. So that's really all I wanted to say. I just want to wish everybody very happy coming in 2018.
Thank you. Thank you. If you're the chair, is there a legal obstacle of what I have in the, on here? Experience? Oh, the formal experience. Before we discuss this, let me first, in, agenda, my name is Sarah. That's okay. That does not appear. Okay, so for the public benefit, from what I understand, I just, um, there, and there was, okay, in addition to the agenda, it's on page one of that. And this is what you're gonna be voting on. And so David, to correct you, I'll have it lying. There were two, there was a bid. I do this, I just take favor of. There was a bid which was due December 20th. There were two, it's on your agenda. There were two submissions. Both did not stay described correctly. I'm under shelter. Both were deemed non-responsive. That's correct. Okay. Non-responsive. So there is on your agenda, they just came in December 20th, a credit to Diane Piazante, whose name I always say wrong, for getting in yesterday, reviewing them, and they were both deemed non-responsive. So that is on the agenda. As your counsel, I will say, we do need to go, and I did this best of the monitor chapter. We do need to go out to bid again. You have to go out to bid twice before you can start. Say that, negotiate. Right, okay, that's what I'm saying. So now, as far as your question as to three years, let me step into a, mind you. I, I, there are many requirements for security companies that they must meet. Prior to my coming here as attorney, there was some discussion, and I used to sit there, so I am sure still, about getting security companies or a public school. There was some kind of, I don't remember, I wasn't, there was an RFP, and you're gonna take outside company, and that did not go anywhere quick to this day. It's not. You are still using your in-house security, and I take no position on that, because that's not a legal question. As far as not public, and I want to be corrected or informed, is this the first, is this the first time we've gone out for security, for not public security guards? No, we went out last year. Is it? No. Yes. No. Yes. No. 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 No.
First time.
And this is. No. That was for public, right? Okay. I wasn't here. So this is for non-public. So this is the first time? Okay. That was for, that is what I'm watching for the audience, that we might have a public. This is non-public. So this is the first time you did it. What, what, this is the exact date. There was a meeting, made the company show up for this to buy that information, stuff?
You're trying to get phone calls.
Diane, did the company show up? Okay. And we got. Yeah, you proposed it, yeah? And I'm sorry about that. And we got two responses, is that right? Like, this is all public information, right? We might as well do this way. Two, two, uh, two responses, both which were deemed non-responsive. Correct. Okay. So my legal advice is you have to reject non-responsive. Do a great thing. Look, okay? And then you need, you should go out, because my fear, addition to the security concern, is that the non-publics are not gonna use the money which is dedicated from the state to them. And you're gonna return money again. You did that last. So we need to go out again for a bid. Right? Okay, so we agree. So the first course of action you need to do, you don't have a choice. You can't respectfully to achieve who I've worked with. You can't say, okay, let's just change the response. And he's not saying to do that, but change the responses we can, and just forget about the three. You can't do that. So you first have to reject what was given in. After that, you must vote to go out for bid again. You can discuss the requirements about which, this is not the first time about this discussion, because this precedes me. But it is something that we thank you for bringing to our attention. Just if I may, and this, again, we have, you understand, we have to reject the bids that were non-responsive. You understand?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have that now?
Yeah, well, it's on your, okay. It's all on your agenda. David's correct. Yeah, I think we're gonna do that, right? Could we just get rid of this, do this business, or again? We, we have doggy beds. All right. Okay. So on your agendas, which David and Diane gave me, is, we'll get it shortly, because it just came in yesterday. So it was a credit to the business office. They reviewed it quickly. That is quick. And they made their decision, which is not because they like or don't like iron dough. I drop.
We're not against this.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's in the Middle East. I'm sorry.
You can just sit here, too.
Okay. So, and this is not for public school students? No. Okay. So, gee, we're gonna get back to you shortly, okay? Thank you for talking. Thank you. What's Mr.? Thank you. What's, what's Mr. Black?
Is there, is there a legal obstacle of having just a law enforcement experience as opposed to having an experience in providing the security?
You know what I would feel better doing before we get into that? Could we first reject, push, do a reading monitor? We need to first reject, respond to. I think. Are you okay with that?
Motion to reject?
Wait, wait, you're getting.
Are we having a closed session after this, or? So why don't we go close session? Are we having this closed session?
Yeah, right now, we have to first, we're gonna take action. As to specifications that should be discussed in closed session. And there's a, we already called the public.
Is there anyone else in the public who wants to speak?
We already had that. We can defer.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson was the only one on the list.
I'll make a motion to approve superintendents.
Wait, wait. Let everyone have the agenda.
Should I just go through?
Well, you have, uh, right there. Okay. I, I really think, and monitor chapter, please, concur or not agree. Before we speak about specification that shouldn't be done in public, we agree.
Not for security.
Right. We would, you can. But that's, so we agree. So on your agenda, that's the time. On your agenda, uh, Sanda. On your agenda, you have on page, someone help me, please. Letter M, I'm hearing from the background. Thank you. Okay, why don't we, oh, I'm sorry, David. Okay, all right.
Right now, we have some corrections to the agenda. There was one correction. It's on page five.
There it is.
I'll make the motion to.
Wait, let, get everyone. Okay, I'd like to. Oh, please look. Okay, um, there is, there are two additions also, if you look. There, there. Okay, so look.
Right now, we have corrections to the agenda that you're gonna be voting on. There's one correction to the agenda. It was on page five, the superintendent items. Number seven, replace this, this one thing here. So that's the corrections to the agenda. Can I get a motion to accept the corrections to the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Black?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Tendler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricer?
Yes.
Mr. Dolls?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Okay, also, we have two additions to the agenda. One of them is stapled on the back. It starts with reports and recommendations of the Business Administrator Board Secretary. That's addition number one. It has two pages to it. So it's page one, page two. That's where the, the, on item I, the resolution to reject the two responsive perceived as non-responsive. Okay, that's the one we're just talking about. Also, there's another one, additions number two, a single item. It's a single item, a superintendent item, number 11. Okay, it's one page long. So what you're gonna be voting on is the acceptance of the two additions to the body of the agenda. Can I get a motion? Motion.
Second.
Mr. Slaken?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Tendler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricer?
Yes.
Mr. Dolls?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
So every one of our monitors chapters correct, if I may, concur. You did, well, I know you did. There was an addition to the agenda that Mr. Shana is going to take on the non-public technology and non-public security grant effective November 1st, 2016. So he will get a pro-rated salary of $106,000. Did see that in the additions? Yes. Yes, that's, yes, okay. So that is taken care of. So is there anything else?
Well, we're gonna vote on business agenda, superintendent agenda, is that what we want to vote?
Yes. Well, like, monitor chapter, not which specific. I think we all can see that.
Okay, so right now, we're gonna vote on the business agenda, okay? Which would include the additions and the corrections, if any. Can I get a motion to accept the business agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Slaken?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Tendler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricer? Mr. Dolls?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's agenda, okay? It's the superintendent's agenda plus the additions and corrections to the agenda you'll be voting on. Can I get a motion to accept?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Slaken?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Tendler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricer?
Yes.
Mr. Dolls?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Before we move to closed session, was there anyone else in the public that wanted to speak? Or we move to closed session?
Um, I have, I have a question that I have to answer. He's got a little project off by.
Go ahead, Diane.
Okay, I imagine so. So anyway, I received a form of care for this boy, and the child lives in the middle of this high school, level 3. A child with a wheelchair. And the child got here last week, four weeks ago. So right away, I thought that was red flag, but then I said, why? They said, the mother died, was found there, they want to pay money for the child. So they raised enough money to just shift the child here. So the father's check, 75% goes towards the rent. There's no money to buy first for this child, but they will not fill a rent. So I thought I would take, I don't know, find out, you know, hands for all.
Well, actually, what I know the student you're talking about, there is a fund. We, we're raising money for this student. There is, I, I, I myself, I thought.
A GoFund.
A GoFund.
Oh, there is a GoFund.
Yeah, I don't know these firms.
Okay, well, I was thinking about it with Miss Morales earlier, because she was thinking of having her something, her store, maybe the donations, you know, for the store.
That is, it's a very good.
She's trying to help the, the family also.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sorry for coming late, but I'm waiting for my son in the back to the school because he went to wrestling. So I spoke today to Mrs. Bolzalis, and absolutely happy here, so for anything they need to do. So my son, he has a small business, so I can do a home day for, you know, gather money and help this family. So absolutely, 100%.
So what, well, no, that's, so what would you, what, what, what are you asking for? Tell us if we can do something.
I don't know. Can we make a collection, but I can tell you a funny page?
Well, I'd like you to tell her, and again, I speak to Miss Morales, but I'm tired, I'm not a student.
I, okay.
But you tell her there is a GoFund account, you know what I'm saying?
You know what I'm saying?
I don't know if it would be, would it be the child's name or?
I do, it's right there.
Oh, wow, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Look out. Thank you, Jim. This is what I saw, okay?
All right.
I knew it sounded familiar.
Okay, don't take it down yet, all right?
Okay, so can you explain?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it like this, yeah.
I knew I got something. So there is this GoFund, yeah, there's this GoFund account, which I would certainly recommend eighteen dollars to the line of every board member, yes, I'm sorry. That's important, no boards and handmaidens, okay?
This is where they sent out the link to us.
Yeah, you'll all get this link, but we are, there is a GoFund account. I just wanted, before she leaves, I wanted the student goes to Lakewood Schools?
Yes.
And has a wheelchair?
Yes, to La Corte.
Oh, and is it self, okay, so...
She wants to know who she give the money to, that she kind of collect.
Oh, here, why don't you go to this GoFund account? For the credit card? Oh, and it's, because it's cash or the post or credit card? As a courtesy, is she raising cash, is that what she's doing?
She's going to have a day at, a day at her store, and all the money that comes in is donated to the cause.
Okay, Mrs. Morales, once you raise that money, we could arrange, the PTO, one of the PTOs could arrange to take the money and then make the donations, right? Does that, all right, yeah, that's okay. Okay?
Okay.
When does that affect, when, oh?
First week of January.
What, is there a day, is there a day?
She's going to be on Saturday, she's still working.
Okay, as soon as you get the date, she's being, tell her to get it to me, we'll do it wholesale. And email to everyone, so everyone will know about it, okay? Okay, so we can do that, but...
How can you touch with, what's that answer for all, see if somebody will donate something to the wood?
Actually, I'm going to, as a courtesy, look into this. We'll get, we'll speak, and we'll see if we can, that would be a board function, but I can hook you up with some agency.
Right, put a rent?
Yes, yes, yeah, well, I have brought this team, but we'll get the right numbers. So much cool, okay? And you'll send this link to all board members. And once we get the exact dates, we'll send it all, email to everyone, okay? To the staff, okay? All right, is there anything else before we go into a short closed session? Action may be taken, as opposed to what I said in the...
I've read the resolution.
Oh.
Execution such a resolution, whereas the Public Code 1975, Chapter 231, Notice of the Public Meetings Act provides that a public body may not exclude from the public any meeting or any discussed any matter described herein until a public body at first adopted a resolution. And whereas the Board of Education of the Council of Lakewood has determined that the following items must be discussed in closed session, and the public must be excluded from said deliberations. And whereas the Board of Education of the Council of Lakewood has determined that the subject matter in closed discussion falls within those matters described in subsection 7B of the Open Public Meetings Act. Now, it's therefore a treaty resolved that the Board of Education of the Council of Lakewood only, in the state of New Jersey, that the Board of Education in closed session may discuss one or more of the following subject matters. Number one, any proceedings, any pending or anticipated litigation. Number two, involving the employment of, employment or termination of employment. Which subject matter constitutes a subject matter described herein in the subsection 7B of the Open Public Meetings Act. Be it further resolved, that the Board of Education of the Council of Lakewood will disclose to the public subject matter of said discussion as soon as the matter have been resolved, and the termination can be disclosed to the public. And I have a motion to go into a executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Slacken? Mr. Jackson Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Racic?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Tendler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricer?
Yes.
Mr. Dallas?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Please, could everyone join us for a cool, a short closed session, short, short, closed session? And, no, we don't want to, you know, we want to go home. And by Jan, by January 30th, he promised, he said he would let us know, because that's what he wanted.
Just so everyone know, it'll be about twenty minutes, and action may be taken.
Okay, could everyone report to closed session quickly, so we can do whatever it is? And I do want to discuss with you some of the things we raised here. Big chat for mom?
How about you?
Yes, we're good, yes.
So it's going to be the president?
So we have a motion to go back into open session. We have a motion.
Second.
Please roll the poll, please.
Mr. Black?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Here.
Mr. Racic?
Mr. Bender?
Mr. Racic, here, here, here. Rodriguez, that's, Mr. Tendler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricer?
Here.
Mr. Dallas?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Here.
I, I think there's a motion to go out for, our pay for security.
Again, that's one.
Yes.
It's that Monterey Schaffler, if you could...
The board is going to, let me see, it's easier for me. The board is going to authorize a resolution to go out to bid a second time to the non-public security services with the same specifications as the prior bid, except that the firm is only going to submit a bid for armed police, armed retired police officers. The firm can have one year of experience.
Make the motion.
Motion.
Second.
Oh, you have a motion?
No, I just, just retired or not retired, no?
No, what that means is that a firm with one year of experience can only bid on the retired police officer portion of the bid.
But let's say they have a police officer who's not retired, let's say, during the...
No, it's only, it's only retired police officer.
Oh, it's only retired guy?
Yes, I have experience.
If they, if they, if they want to bid on an armed...
Oh, I thought that you have a police officer who's on force. The police officer who's on force. What's the difference between retired and not?
David, David's great. Oh, it could be retired or non-retired.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
But they can't put a bid in on an armed security.
Correct, correct. It has to be either a police officer or retired police officer.
Yes.
So if you have three years of experience, you can bid on all three items. Really, one year of experience, you can only bid for an armed police officer.
By retired or not?
Right.
I don't know, I don't know if people on force are interested, but I'm just saying, why exclude them?
So with that clarification, we have a motion.
Okay, who's making the motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Black?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Racic?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tendler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricer?
Yes.
Mr. Dallas?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Anything else for anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Have a happy holiday.
Hold the paper.
Yes.
Next meeting in January, April, right?
Yes.
Seven thirty, seven, six, six thirty? And then six thirty. Seven o'clock? Seven o'clock from now on?
Yes.
Oh, we already had to place, or sometimes, or...
Yes, this was, this was a emergency, this was in between. No lunch?
Oh, I'm going to stand by, I'm standing. Okay, this one is, I understand it's scurrying too.